Is ready. Okay, it is 5:02 PM on Monday, July 14th, 2025. This is a regular board meeting of the Monroe School District President or myself, Vice President Campbell. Director Barnes is joining us via Zoom. Director Ed Scorn, Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. President Bumpus and Director Whitfield will not be in attendance with us this evening. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Knox website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We're happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Just to confirm, Holly, there were no other, nothing that came in? Okay. All right. And that allows us to move on to, I close it out, here we go. Agenda item 1.04, review the agenda. And we do have a late add of a couple of agenda items. Molly and James just came in. On here I have agenda item 4.0 for the Chromebook, Chromebook quotes. Is that? And then we also have three point, we made it, I just moved it, I wrote it down. 3.03. And it's a new 3.03 we added because it's a first read. And that is the sexual policy, first read for policy number 3205, sexual harassment of students prohibited. That language has been updated. And Holly, you're able to get that digitally on there as well. Okay, thank you so much. Those, those will be on the agenda for tonight as well. All right. That said, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, if you guys would like.
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated July 14th, 2025.
Right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second. All in favor, raise your hand. And the motion passes three to zero. All right. Moving on to agenda item 2.01, consideration of donations. Oh. Oh yeah, Molly, that's a good point, Molly. I just totally assumed that was bad. I just realized that I'm an autopilot. What, what's your, what's your vote, Molly?
My vote was yes.
Okay, thank you. That's probably a good thing there. Holly, thank you for keeping us on track there and legal. All right. The agenda item has passed three to zero. All right, moving on. Thank you so much. All right, item 2.01, consideration of donations. The Frylands Elementary PT has donated $3,004.64 as a monetary grant for the sole and express purpose of purchasing Scholastic News for the 2025-2026 school year. And Frylands Elementary PT has also donated a $1,000 monetary grant for the art program. Super excited for that. Thank you guys so much for investing in that, Frylands PTA. All right, agenda item 2.02, public comment. There are no public comments, so we'll move on to the business section. And we'll start with agenda item 3.01. So we have three first reads, we're updating some policy as that's going on. And this is policy 2020 course design selection and adoption of instructional materials. And this is our first read. And we have Director of Elementary Education Jennifer Murphy to come update us on that. Thanks, Jennifer.
Hey, how are you guys? Um, okay, so the RCW is being updated. That pertains to our instructional materials committee. And so as a result of the update to the RCW, we need to update our policy and procedure concerning our adoption of materials. And so what you all have is the updates that get us closer to the WASDA policy. A lot of the policy updates are really grammar related. Just make it read a little bit better. We could go page by page, but we probably don't need to. What's been cut out is just making it read a little bit better. The one thing that you'll see kind of on the last part, section three, has that it can now be the superintendent or designee that ensures that we maintain a list of core instructional materials. That actually helps. So I don't know if you guys have any questions on it.
James, Molly, you guys have any questions?
Can you comment about this technology-based resources completely removed on the third page?
Um, those kind of fall under supplemental or temporary supplemental. And then we deal with the library materials where some of that technology piece will fall in a different policy.
Okay.
One of the questions I had at the end of it, just I know that a lot of these, they're changing and WASD is changing because we have RCWs that update. There on the second to last page, there's three RCWs that are highlighted right there as well. Are those new RCWs or are those edited RCWs? You know?
I do not know.
Okay.
I can find out.
That's okay, this is still the first reading. Just curious about that as we get ready to walk through this. Molly, did you have any questions?
No, no questions here.
All right. James, you good? Okay, we, there's no, no, no action item for this one because it's a first read. So we'll move on to 3.02, which is policy. Refresh this, hold on one second. Policy 2029, which is animals as a part of the instructional program, which is first read. And Darby, do you want to come up and share about this one with your team?
Hello, everyone. So I brought Kelly Pitts up here because there is some safety associated with this particular change in policy. We were approached by our new egg science teacher, Ben Benson, to be able to conduct projects in our egg science programs that raise chicks and mostly chickens. Right, that was the plan. There's some FFA stuff that allows students on a short-term basis to raise chickens as part of their, the curriculum and the CTSOs associated with it. So we've changed a little bit, deleted just that line that says chicks and ducks because that was specifically not okay. And then added some things about how we would mitigate the possible risks. So and Kelly has been working on that as well.
Yeah. The procedural piece will follow with some pretty strict guidelines on addressing what the safety health issues may be with chicks or ducks. So that's where there's a little bit of some lifting still to do. Even most of that, we've kind of worked out.
So because this was in our old policy, does, do we just need to beef up our procedural process on how that looks for that? Okay, that goes with the policy. And then if we raise eggs, I mean, we don't need to do any bonds anymore, do we? Because I mean, those are so expensive, $4 million per egg. So that's great. It's a fundraiser. Does this put any implications into? Because if the, if the model policy is in direct contrast to that, does it put any risk for us with? Or is that part of the, the safety stuff that we have to put so that makes sure we're in compliance with the state?
Yes, it does. Those RMD would not cover anything in a communicable diseases standpoint.
Right.
That's what I've been told by them. The rest of it would kind of fall under whatever procedurals they sent me some guidelines that they have that their first recommendation is no but slash. If you are, here's a bunch of guidelines that we recommend.
Okay. So things like viruses are communicated by birds, salmonella, things like that.
Yeah, salmonella is one of the biggest concern of it. Rodents attracted by food.
Yep.
And that's a bigger piece of the procedural piece that we'll, we'll shore up to make sure it's like that.
Okay.
And we also feel really strongly because of the location of the place in the, in the shed. It's away from the main building. And there's lots of places for us to do some of this mitigation as far as like protecting the birds and protecting us from that, as well as the fact that a lot of these policies had something to do with five-year-old children as being what we're protecting. And that's not part of the high school population.
So, okay.
Yeah, how strict are we on this? The whole harmless liability waiver as in like other regular checkups in the classroom? Like are all, do most students already like, you know, some classes have a rabbit or something or a lizard or something?
Yeah, there's, there's one body, any of the, the teachers that have that as part of their program have to have that.
And is it just on the teachers to remember which students have signed it and which haven't?
No, they have to keep track. They have to keep a file on it. Good. All of the students in that classroom have to have it. And if, if they don't, then they have to make some sort of arrangement around that. So again, the difference there in most cases is there's also personal liability because those are individually owned. That's where this is more related to program. And so that's some of the verbiage also that you have to look at. Say it, if they're coming to the program, they're not individually owned. The school does have some risk related to that.
So yeah, just on this way, is there an audit then? Or do you or does somebody go by and like check to make sure that these are actually being signed and filled out and completed?
Yeah, that's on me.
Okay.
And it's also part of our CTE compliance reporting that we have to keep track of that stuff.
Okay, great. Thank you.
On a practical level, is that just something you can have included in the syllabus when they start the class? As a document? Okay. Molly, did you have any questions?
No questions, just a comment. You know how I feel about baby ticks. So I'm kind of excited for this and for our students to be able to experience this. This is pretty cool.
I think that Molly Barnes will be visiting this classroom.
Absolutely, I will.
Awesome. All right, that's also information. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll move on to agenda item, our new item, our new 3.03, which is our sexual harassment policy of students prohibited. This is a late addition. I know we're getting some of that finalized. And Casey Bunny, are you, thank you for coming up and helping us with this in the process. Can you, so there's a lot of edits on here. Can you give us kind of the Cliff Notes understanding? Because I can see like there's a, a lot of sections taken out and additions. What is the reasoning behind that? Kind of what's the state doing and helping to make sure we're in compliance?
Yeah, you know, I'm, the WASDA policy, the, the recommendation really was a, quite an overhaul from the last version. A lot of that is just kind of moving pieces around and making it, I think, a little bit more readable. The why behind there being a change, especially since we just had one so recently is because the recent change that we had in October was to get us up to date to the 2024 Title IX regulations with our new administration. They've said, nope, no more 2024 regs. We're going back to the 2020 regs. So this is a reflection of moving back to the 2020 regs. Yes, there's a lot of markups on here. The primary changes really surround moving back to sexual harassment rather than sex-based discrimination. And then just some, there's quite a few procedural changes that will happen due to the, the regulations. For example, in the 2024 regs, any report is a report in the 2020, which we're now back to. There is a, an informal report and a formal report. So that's just an example of some of those procedural changes that will happen. But as far as the policy itself, it primarily is just reflecting mostly that change from sex-based discrimination back to sexual harassment.
Okay, that makes, that makes a lot more sense. And when we went to Sean and Molly and Chuck and I went to the State WASDA Conference in Spokane this last November, they talked about this because that was a big change with the, with the change in presidency. It was kind of from one to another. They changed it. Now we're going back to flipping, flopping, whatever. And we just get the, the whiplash out of all of that. One of the questions I had also was because they brought this up was if there is a, if there is a, a report on something, but the timestamp of when that report happened, do we have to maintain the old language as well? That we don't want to do away with this because let's say something happens in 2022 and it's reported on today or, or in six months or whatever, when our new policy is in effect, do the regulations of the policy of the time? Or is it just what today's policies are affected? Do we know about that? Because that was kind of one of the questions in the legal section that we were trying to understand.
Yeah, my understanding is that you would follow the regulations that were in place at the time of the occurrence of the actual act.
Okay.
Not, not necessarily when it's reported, but when it happened. So if, for example, you know, we had a very short window of time at the beginning of this school year where the 2024 regulations were in place. If, you know, next school year, we get a report that says, hey, in September of 24, this happened to me, we would be following the 2024 regulations mostly. There's still some 2020 things that we have to take into account and, and be aware of. But yes, it's based on the date of the incident.
That was, that was, that's good because that led, led me to, from a practical perspective of making sure we'll still keep the information that we have for our current policy on file because that, that's the timestamp issue. So yeah, fall of 24, something happens to a student, XYZ, whatever, that's the timestamp. At the very least, we have the, the language at the time saying, okay, we know how to proceed forward because this was the law at the time and here's the policy at the time.
Yeah.
Okay, because I didn't want this to disappear and then we're floundering, trying to figure something out.
Yeah, no. And really, I mean, while of course our policy and our procedures reflect what's in those regulations, it's really more of the Title IX Coordinator understanding what the regulations were at that time versus what they are now.
Okay. James?
So under the staff responsibilities, it highlights that staff are required to submit a written complaint if they see something. It does, but it doesn't have the, well, at least I didn't see it opposite. Like what happens if the staff sees something and doesn't submit a report? Should we include that in the policy?
To me, that would go more in the procedure than the policy. But we can certainly address that here.
Yeah, we can check if our procedure and see if that's in there. My assumption is that it's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Molly, did you have any questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, they covered, they covered this pretty extensively in the legal session of WASD this year. So, all right, thank you, Casey, appreciate that. And this is new, so we'll give a chance for President Bumpus and Director Whitfield to take a look at this as well. And then we'll bring this up in our next meeting, I believe, for the second read. Okay. All right. Moving on to agenda item 3.04, which is going to need an action item. This is the second reading of our energy management, education, and conservation policy. Stand at the, all right, and pull this up here. All right, did you guys have any questions or comments about this one? Is it late June that we talked about this one? Last read? And last, yeah. With Adam.
Were there any changes since then? Or do we have any open action items from that discussion?
Okay. Molly, did you have any questions or comments about that one?
No.
Okay. All right, do, is anyone want to make a motion?
Yes.
Because if there's no motion, it dies.
I motion to approve Mrs. Policy 6810.
It's on the bottom of it. I see it. Yeah, 6810. All right. Molly, do you second it?
Yeah, second.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve and adopt the Energy Management Education Conservation Policy. All in favor since Molly's on Zoom, please say aye.
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 All right, motion passes three to zero. Aye, motion passes three to zero. Sorry, got, I confused myself there. That's not hard. All right. Moving on to agenda item 3.05. All right. And this also requires an action. This is our second read of the University of Florida Literacy UFLI curriculum, which was super exciting that Jennifer presented. And we're actually getting back to teaching phonics and teaching kids how to read. And that's going to be a good investment in our students. Were there any questions or comments about that as well?
I'm just a general comment. I guess this is mainly for you, Sean. It was brought to our attention that, you know, it was not evidence-based education, you know, or evidence-based strategy. So just curious, are there other areas where we are not using evidence-based educational methods?
Yeah, so I can't remember what part of the presentation mentioned that. I think, just to be clear, utilizing this UFLI curriculum, our, our current instructional materials had a phonics component in it already. The issue was it wasn't very user-friendly for teachers to put together their lessons. And this is far more user-friendly. But your question is really good. So as part of our instructional materials review process, we crosswalk whatever materials we're reviewing up against state standards and current best practice research. So that's an ongoing thing. Every time we take a look at new curriculum, we're making sure our practices are in alignment with evidence-based best practices. I'm sure there are, as we audit things over the next seven to 10 years, which is a typical adoption cycle, we will find things that we need to shore up, just like we're shoring up the phonics curriculum. Funny thing is Andrew and I just had, and I'll introduce her formally here in a moment. We're just looking at our mathematics achievement data today. And we were, Andrew had made the suggestion that we take a look at our four years, four years' worth of data and disaggregate the data by category, you know, whether it's numbers, sense, measurement, so on and so forth, and see if there's some areas that we really haven't been making any gains. That could be an issue with our instructional materials or it could be an issue with our practice. And so those are the kinds of things that we'll, we'll audit and crosswalk and then provide the necessary support to make sure that's the right things are happening in our classrooms. So long answer to a short question. Sorry about that, but more to come.
Okay, good.
That's good to know. Also, we just adopted math curriculums as well. And I think part of that was, wasn't Eureka adopted right before COVID? Yeah, and then it was like never fully be able to implement properly. So that's a good, good, good thing for us to look at as well. Awesome. Jennifer, were there any changes or anything else made to, after we had our first reading that we need to be aware of?
No, I think the only thing that we talked about, like, I can't remember what we were going to talk about. It was the decodable and what we, I think, we talked too well about and what our principals are going to decide to do.
Okay. What our principals decided to do is we're not going to order the decodables right now. We're going to kind of wait and that'll be a part of our rollout implementation. And, you know, we're, we're recommending several different companies of decodables. And those are more of a supplement to the core that is UFLI, so.
Molly, did you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Awesome. All right, is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt the UFLI curriculum.
Second.
There's a motion, a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve and adopt the University of Florida Literacy Institute UFLI curriculum. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion passes three to zero. Okay, moving on, and this is quick, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the consent agenda dated July 14th, 2027 as presented.
You mean 2025?
Yeah, 2025, sorry.
Okay, just want to make sure that's in the record. I don't live in the future yet.
Living in the future, second.
All right, there's a motion, a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items enlisted, listed and presented in the consent agenda dated July 14th, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Okay, Superintendent Woodward?
All right, so I want to start by welcoming two individuals who are stepping into key leadership roles in our school district. I pointed out Andrew Murray over here. Andrew has joined as our new Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Teaching. She's coming from the Lake Pondreys School District in Idaho. But prior to that, the majority of her career was spent in school districts in Western Washington. So she's coming back home to join us here in Monroe. While she's not going to present this evening, you're, you're going to hear plenty of Andrew probably starting at our next meeting as we dive into some of our strategic plan indicators of success and how we did to wrap up last school year. Andrew is going to play and have a ton of confidence in Andrew and I will not embarrass her. I'll try not to, Andrew, sorry. But she's going to play an absolutely critical role to help us on this current trajectory that we are on. You know, our, our, our learning data is really picking up. It's, it's, I think it's very impressive and a tribute to our teachers and our staff and our administrators and our board supporting the work that we're doing. No pressure, Andrew, but I, I feel like adding her is a critical part to the puzzle here. And, and I think we'll be able to increase that, that, that speed of progress with the experience that she's bringing to the table. So super excited to have Andrew here. So welcome to the Monroe School District, Andrew. And we've got Darby Vegas here, who's been here a really long time. And she is our, serving as our interim Director of Career and Technical Education. A lot of you already know Darby. We're really excited to have Darby here in her expanded role. One of her first priorities is to ensure that by next February, we have added an industry-recognized certification for kids to access right at Monroe High School. So come February, again, I'm dumping the pressure on these two new leaders in this district. We will have another course offering at Monroe High School that is in alignment with industry demand in this area. And as well as something that if our students take, take a series of courses, earn that certification and get their high school diploma, that they will be able to go out into the world and make a good enough living to be able to live on their own and, and, and support our community in a high-demand field. So more to come on that. Hanover Research is working with us right now on a report to help us identify what are we missing currently at Monroe High School that, that if we offered, kids would be more future-ready? So that's one of Darby's first tasks. Andrew and Jennifer and I, with, with Holly's support, are actively planning our leadership retreat for our administrators. Last year, we were off-site, will be off-site again for three days in index. And really just digging into, we do some team building and, and most of it's just going to be real deep work around academic improvement and, and systems development. So we're, we're gathering all of our data now on attendance and belonging and growth and achievement in both mathematics and English Language Arts. And we'll be able to roll out school by school our, our current, where we're at in our last four years' worth of data to begin working on our school improvement plans. And we'll, we're thinking of presenting in the same way that we did last year where it was kind of a round, round robin. So you could do the one-on-one with, with the leaders from each of those buildings. So we're building out our, I don't know how many hours we'll have together, but it'll be somewhere around 20 hours to make sure that we just hit the ground running for this next school year. So a lot of our work this month is just prepping for that and prepping for, for the school year coming up. So a lot of good work happening. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Awesome. Moving on to, sorry, did you guys have any questions for Sean before we move on to board reports? Well, welcome, I guess, still Darby, obviously, but to the new role and your new chapter. And excited to see our new Assistant Superintendent as well. We'll be hearing more from you as well. So very excited, welcome to our team. And we're really excited. We, one of the cool things I'm, I'm excited about is just that we feel like we have really good momentum. Finally, it was some dark days for a while. And I know that there are some school districts in our state as well that are still really struggling with different things. And I'm, I'm thankful that that's not the case for us. I hurt for them. And because really with the end of that, kids lose. And that's, that's, that's the biggest tragedy to that. So, all right, that said, Molly, did you have any questions or comments for Superintendent Woodward?
No, I'm just really excited to have our assistant soup come on board and to be able to get to know her better and for Darby stepping into this new role. So. No, I'm just really excited to have our assistant soup come on board and to be able to get to know her better and for Darby stepping into this new role. So, yeah.
And welcome, Andrea. All right. Uh, agenda item 6.01, board reports. Uh, Molly, since you're already there, do you want, did you have anything that you wanted to share?
I'm just thankful that you and James are there holding down the fort while I'm away uh, and taking care of everything. And I hope you're having a good summer.
Thank you for helping us make quorum, Molly.
You're welcome.
Meeting. Awesome. James, did you have any comments or reports? Very cool. Well, I would just say one thing, enjoy your summer, everybody. Make sure that you're getting some time away to rejuvenate, be healthy and uh, enjoy the sunshine while you're out there and excited as we get ready to. I, I know it's, it's, it's technically not halfway through July just yet. Tomorrow it will be, but uh, um, to start thinking about the next school year already, it's, it's a, it's a little daunting, but I'm excited for what's ahead and uh, excited for a lot of our updates that are coming along. Excited to see some of the student data. Uh, we just, our family just got our SPECT data back as well and uh, explaining to our kids what that means and how that reads. Cause I had, I had a 10th grader this year. So there was a lot of things on the line. And uh, and so that's exciting, but um, appreciate that and really excited. That said, if there's no other comments, uh, this meeting is adjourned at 5:33 PM.